Good evening. Today is Monday, October 1st, 2018. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'll call the meeting to order. As our first item, let us remember Maddox Scott Rich. Our student at the Merrifields Walls School and most recently at a TELP primary. He was the son of my former coworkers, Karen and Rich. Please join me in a moment of silence for Maddox. Thank you. Our SRO tonight is Daniel Adcock from Mount Pleasant High School. Oh, over the window. Thank you for being here. Board members will take a motion to set the, or to adopt the agenda.
I'll move second.
Okay, who did the move? Dr. Kirk and Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes 7-0. First up, we have a report on the Empower I-III Grant. Joining us tonight. This must be a large presentation.
Not really.
You want to introduce who you have with you? Do you want to introduce who you have with you?
Oh, perfect. Yes, well-
If you want to pull the mic down there. Thanks, that's good. It'll pick it up.
Well, I'm Bridget Jones. I work with Program Choice. I'm also the project director for the Empower Grant.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Sonnagara and I am the Empower coordinator.
So, we're here tonight to talk about the Empower Grant that we received. And Empower stands for Expanding Magnet Program Options, Widening Educational Reach. But before we talk more in-depth about Empower, we'd like to start with a little bit about where we came from. So, our very first I-III grant was awarded in 2014. And we received that I-III grant. And I-III stands for Investing in Innovation. The logo is not visible on the screen. But we received that for building a K-12 STEM pipeline, which had not been done in the state of North Carolina. And then, we did an outstanding job with that grant. And we had a lot of support from our program office in DC. And we went ahead and tried for a second I-III grant, which is really unheard of. Most school districts, first of all, don't get I-III grants. But we went for our second one. And because of the support that we had from our program office, we were awarded that second I-III grant. And that one was for Empower. And we were awarded that in 2017 to expand those programs. So, we showed them what we could do with STEM. And then they thought, "Well, this is a school district that can pull this off." So, they awarded us our second grant. This is from the United States Department of Education. From 2017, January 1st, 2017, all the way until December 30th, 2020. So, it's a four-year grant. And we got $3 million. Up on the screen, you'll see that the funding is over $3 million. But the reason for that is because we had to secure a matching, a match. So, in order to secure the $3 million, we had to find 15 percent, a 15 percent match. And we did. And that really is just to show community support and to further sustain the program when the funding from the United States Department of Education is- Can we slow that down so we can see who our partners were? Thank you. So, up on the screen are the partners that so graciously gave our 15 percent match. And we're very thankful to them.
All right. So, Empower was designed to expand and implement, implement, excuse me, magnet programs throughout Cabarrus County schools. And to ensure that we were giving equitable access to instruction and curriculum, Empower intentionally placed magnet programs into schools that had greater than 50 percent free and reduced lunch for both IB and STEM. And then for dual language in Spanish, we looked at our schools that had a Hispanic population of 25 percent or more English language learners.
So, tonight, what we want to do is share with you the four goals that we have for Empower and let you know what we have done after our first year of implementation. So, on the screen, you can see our four goals. To revise policies, to expand our programs. Our second goal is to deliver professional development in terms of content and culturally responsive training for our teachers. Our third goal is to work with students and support them using socio-emotional, academic, and noncognitive support so that we can help them persist through this pipeline. And to engage families. Our fourth goal is to really engage families and meet them where they're at so that they can better help their child also persist through the pipelines. In 2017, our first, 2017-18 was our first year of implementation. And these were the schools that were implemented for year one. CC Griffin, Concord Middle, Harold E. Winkler, J.M. Fries, Irvin, Weinkoff, Northwest Cabarrus High, and Northwest Cabarrus Middle. Starting this school year, 2018-19, we started at Harrisburg Elementary, Royal Oaks Elementary, Weddington Hills Elementary, and Wolf Meadow Elementary. You'll see we have a Phase III, which is our new high school program, or a new high school. And Central Cabarrus High School is up there as TBD. We have a letter out to our program office right now letting them know that Central Cabarrus High School will not have the academy that we originally had planned due to the realignment. And so, that program, and they also know that we have, the new high school being delayed as well. So, our first goal is to make sure that we are implementing policy that helps expand the pipeline. And so, that was actually done by this board in 2017 when, or 2016, when you voted to increase our magnet options within our schools. So, thank you for that. Advisory council, we have an advisory council that meets at least two or three times a week. Last school year, 2017-18, we met three times. And we just talk about what's going well at the schools and what we need to change for the upcoming year, or what we need to focus on. And then, we also look at enrollment and who is persisting through our pipeline. And when we talk about pipeline, we're talking about IB programs, STEM programs, and our
So, the second goal of the grant is professional learning. The grant states that we deliver three professional development sessions in cultural responsiveness every single year. And so, last year, we successfully did that and did that for 610 educators. Additionally, our counselors were able to deliver professional development and mindfulness and also parent engagement. Additionally, we have partnered with University of North Carolina at Charlotte to develop a problem-based learning online certificate program, unique for Empower staff members only. At the end of the grant, they intend on opening that as a course for their own students. So, that's very exciting. We've had three cohorts complete the certificate training. And of those cohorts, 72 educators from Empower schools have successfully completed the certificate program. We are now on cohort four. Also, at the end of the school year, we deliver a survey to all Empower staff members. And 70 percent of those staff members said that our trainings were very well worth their time, which is very important to us because we want our trainings to be meaningful to our staff members. So, goal number three is wraparound and support services. And so, through Empower, we were able to hire three counselors, especially for Empower schools. Last year, at the eight schools that we served, they were able to work with individually and in small groups, an intensive support, intensive, excuse me, and sustained support for 238 students, which is 5 percent of all Empower students. These students are identified through MTSS at the Tier Two and Tier Three levels. So, they do need individual and group leveled support at an intensive level. And they also are identified through referrals as well as other means. Our counselors work collaboratively with all of student support services in the school, the school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers, and even run groups with them. They also participate on the MTSS teams and some leadership teams as well. So, this year, they've expanded their caseload with four additional schools. And so, they are split amongst our 12 Empower schools and hopefully are increasingly doing And then, the fourth goal of the grant is family engagement. And so, our counselors at the school level are our parent engagement liaisons. And so, they help the schools, support all of them on their, the activities that they host within the school. But then additionally, they wanted to do something unique. And so, we said, "Hey, let's do that." And so, we looked at all of our schools. We looked at the locations. And we found three areas where we can actually host community events for our parents on relevant topics. Our first one was last week at Logan Community Center. And we had speakers on social media safety, human trafficking, and drug and alcohol abuse. And so, we have two more coming up, one in October and one in November. And we invite you to come and see what we have going on. And then, if, hopefully, we're looking at having different topics and speakers in the springs that we actually get into the community with our families where they're at. So, these are our counselors.
We thought that you would want to know a little bit about what our counselors found important in the first year of implementation. So, these are our three counselors, as Ashley said. And we're going to read the quotes to you because we thought that they were inspiring and shows the, the work that they do in their own words. So, "I was motivated by high school students who started off the year being skeptical or resistant, now hope to continue with services with me next year."
"I enjoy being recognized by my colleagues as an effective resource to support parent engagement."
"After a year of building relationships with school personnel, I feel I am an asset for supporting students and parents in assessing counseling resources that are responsive to their unique circumstances." And just to put a little touch on the, you know, end of our presentation, we wanted to tell you what the students thought of their Empower counselors. And so, we asked a couple of them while we were out at the schools and doing some observations. One student said, "Mrs. D, Ms. D has helped me learn how to help my stress."
Another student said, "I like that I am recognized for doing better in class."
So, that concludes our presentation. And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am. I understand there was a permission slip that went home the first week of school that referenced being able to participate in surveys. And so, the concern that was brought to me was they were not able to find the surveys online. And it didn't say whether any protected topics were covered in those surveys. We kind of went through this a little bit just a few months ago. Just, I just wanted to make sure that if there were, and it was a, I think it's a DOD survey, that the parents were involved and that kind of thing. That was one. And then, another one was on the, on the bottom of it, the contact information was somebody at Empower. It didn't, it wasn't a local contact. And I think that was another thing that was a little, little bit of an issue with that prior survey. The parents didn't know where to, you know, go when they had questions about the sensitive topic conversation.
Absolutely. I think, I think we can answer both of those questions. So, the form is not a permission slip. It's an opt-out form. So, on the form, it will say, it explains what Empower is. It explains that we have an independent evaluator that has nothing to do with Cabarrus County. They have to, we implement the grant with fidelity. And they look to see that we are, they're looking to see that we are implementing with fidelity. And they're looking at the evaluation of, so they're the ones that come in and say, "This percentage of your teachers had the professional development and they thought it was worthy." Or they go and they talk with students, "How likely are you to persist through the pipeline? How likely are you to, to want to continue on in STEM or IB?" So, it's an opt-in or opt-out form. This year, we created the in. Last year, we only had the out. So, what that means is the parents will learn about Empower. We give them the website and they can further, you know, look to see what it's all about. And then, at the end, they can say, "Yes, I'm happy with my child participating in Empower." Or, "No, I don't want my child to participate in Empower." And so, then, that student is excluded from any of the evaluation or data that's collected. And then, does that answer your first question?
Yes. The form says survey or focus groups. And I think the contents of those surveys, as long as it doesn't touch a protected subject, it doesn't have to have a consent. But if it does, then it, I guess it does have to have consent. That's the only piece that was brought to me.
No, I understand. Yeah, no, I completely understand that parents would want to understand what their students are going to be partaking in. And we have worked with this independent evaluator as well with Inspire. And we don't, we don't have any topics that are, it's really about the pipeline. It's really about persistence through the pipeline and what they feel about school. Your second question was about the, or probably our external evaluator. So, if they had additional information and wanted specific questions to the survey or wanted specific questions about what the students would be asked, then they could contact the evaluation group or TEG and get that information from Dr. Askew.
Yes, that was the, the concern, that there wasn't a local contact on there. That, that may be a good idea to put a local contact on there.
I, we will make that change. Thank you.
So, this is by the independent evaluator to just see if we're implementing and how things are going in our district without staff opinions. So-
Well, and we set up goals. We have, we have our impact study that was distributed at our last advisory council meeting. And so, they just make sure that we're hitting our targets. Because every year, we have a annual performance review. And we have to be hitting those targets in order to be implementing the grant with fidelity. So, that's their job. They are there to just make sure the data is collected and that we are hitting those benchmarks so that at the end of four years, we do, we, we do what we said we were going to do. And right now, we're on target.
Yeah, good. And that, that certainly sounds reasonable. So-
One question that I have. Do you know what your topics in October are going to be? I'm just curious because I know bullying is one of the things in October. That's one of the things that we're talking about because it's bullying. You know, where in this month is that one of the topics that we're going to be speaking about?
Actually, so, we're actually doing the same topics for September, October, and November because we wanted all parents to have equitable access to the same information. So, we haven't changed the topics for those sessions. It's certainly something we can look into for the fall. I know October is National Anti-Bullying Month. So, I understand wanting to really touch on that topic. But we know the schools do amazing jobs touching on that topic regardless.
And I did attend the session that we just had in September. And I attended the session on social media. And there was a lot of emphasis on bullying from the prosecutor in Cabarrus County. And she was, she heavily emphasized what social media and technology has done for bullying and how it's, you know, the, the different things that parents can do to help keep their kids safe or, or give them a break from social media and bullying and some of the things that they're dealing with.
She talked a lot about cyber safety, cyber bullying, and exactly what parents can do to help prevent that.
Well, I thought if you were having the parents there, anytime you can do that, that's great.
Yeah, absolutely. And I hope that you guys will come out on October 16th. It's going to be, it's really, it's pretty fascinating. Our presenters are-
What time is the presentation?
5:30 to 7:30. And there is, during that time, you're able to access two of the three presenters.
Okay, any other questions?
In your, in your presentation, you noted that there was an advisory council. Who serves on that council? How do you choose those folks? And what type of background are you looking for to have that council?
It's really our principals, our part of the advisory council, our coaches, coordinators, our partners. So, we have a representative from UNCC. We have a representative from Junior Achievement. And we have, who else is on our advisory council that I'm not thinking of?
Ms. Hill. She's always there.
Dr. Hill. So, there's no, it's, it's more about being accountable for the work that we're doing. And we feel like the people that can kind of keep us in balance and keep us in check are the people who are implementing the programs in the schools, which would be the principals, and then our partners that have obviously a vested interest and invested in us.
So, you have to have like a education session with the council to go over what the grant is expecting for, because you said you have to implement with fidelity. So, obviously, you have to know what the rules are to implement.
Yes. So, every meeting, every advisory meeting that we have, we start out with our four goals. And we talk about how we're progressing to meet those goals and where we're at and where we're headed.
So, how many do you estimate, estimate? You said you had 610 last year, professional development personnel, people participating in professional development. How many will you have total this year?
Well, most of the schools that came on this year were immersion schools. So, there'd just be a couple additional teachers for-
The whole school gets the professional development.
Oh, the whole, okay.
Yeah. So, it'll be the addition of all the certified staff for four more schools. I'm not sure of the numbers.
Wow. Okay.
So, while Empower is just for like an immersion program, the entire staff gets the professional development because the benefit is, yes, is great for everybody.
All right. So, the goal is to persist through the kids through the pipeline. Do we, how do we measure that? And what is our persistent rate, persistence rate?
So, this first year, 2017 and 18 was our baseline year. So, that, we won't know our persistence rate until this school year when students start to renew. On October 9th, Program Choice applications open again. On October 9th, that means that parents that have a student in a program right now in a pipeline program like STEM or IB or one of our immersion programs, they'll complete a renewal. That means that they get priority placement in the next level or next grade. And so, that's how we'll determine the persistence, how many students, the percentage of students that transition from one to the next.
I believe you said you had partnerships with several community partners. And UNC Charlotte was, is one of them for that portion, that 15 percent in-kind contribution. Specifically, which area of UNC Charlotte is partnering with us? And how are we kind of furthering that partnership by involving personnel from UNC Charlotte possibly to help write the curriculum or be involved in, in the oversight?
So-
So, I'm sure, I guess it's not just a financial contribution. There might be some professional tie-in as well with UNC Charlotte. If you could explain that, please.
Sure. So, we have partnered with UNCC, the STEM segment of UNCC, to develop our PBL course. So, they have created a five module, six module?
I believe it's seven modules.
Seven modules.
It's an intensive online certificate course.
For teachers that are just Empower teachers right now can go through and they can receive this training. And at the end of it, they get a certificate from UNCC to say they went through it. And at the end of all of this, UNCC, like Ashley said, for the professional development slide, is actually going to open this course to all students in Charlotte, the Charlotte region. So, teachers can take it that work in Charlotte, McRae, or Union County.
So, are you saying that UNC Charlotte's portion of that 15 percent was not strictly financial but was an in-kind contribution of the development of those?
It is in-kind. They did not give us a monetary-
But the, the value of that curriculum is, is their contribution?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And I just want to say, especially when they list in this presentation, we added nine schools into the choice program last year, which is really a major change when you start talking almost a quarter of all of our schools. And then, this year, we bring four more on for that. It was just at Weddington Hills this morning where they've added the immersion program, wildly successful, actually. What the principal was, Ms. Dolan was talking about was how many people didn't get to participate in it. So, a significant waiting list. Royal Oaks is obviously open with that. So, as Ms. Jones said, we want to thank the board for the kind of forward thinking for that, to make the school district competitive because it really does. And it, these are massive changes that you guys agreed to that really make our school district competitive. And then, also, the support that these ladies have worked on to help secure the grant because Ms. Jones was a big part of that. And then, as these ladies try to figure out how we support especially underrepresented groups to participate in that, it's really a, a big project. So, we appreciate all the work that you guys have done for that.
Thank you. Thank you. One more? Go ahead.
When you engage the parents, how have you found, you've had, what, one meeting so far this year? But last year, I guess you had some parental engagement. Did, how did you find the attendance and the ability for the parents to, to attend your sessions?
I think that's a really good question. I think that that was one of the reasons that we, because of the feedback, because of low attendance, because of lots of reasons that parents don't always attend events, they looked, our counselors looked to do something a little more creative and meet communities where they're at and go into the community rather than families have to come to the school. A lot of families are not comfortable with that. So, we, it depends on the school. It depends on a lot of factors, if families show up and, and the reason for the event. But that's one of our biggest takeaways was, what can we do different? What's something, we've been given this great opportunity with Empower to do something different. So, what are we going to do that sets us apart? And I, I think our counselors have done an amazing job of putting together these programs where families come to a place that they feel comfortable and they already know and they're used to and their kids are used to. And they just kind of pick up where they left off and, and get really great informative information.
Yeah. And the families that were there were really engaged as well.
So, you think that the word of mouth might start traveling to the families and spurn more participation? I mean, you just had one event, but you've got two more to come.
We hope. That's, I mean, that is the hope, right? And getting creative with marketing, we've actually started going into grocery stores for certain populations and different community markets and hoping that that also helps. And not just putting out a connect app, but really meeting them where they're at. Exactly.
Truly face-to-face?
Yes.
Right. So, I think what we're working on for this next event is more teacher, a teacher invitation. We think that if it's really intentional on the teacher's part to invite families to an event, even if they can't attend, to be able to, to give an invitation to a family, the family is going to perceive that as being wanted and hopefully attend.
Thank you.
And this might be a question for Dr. Louder or administrative staff. They're heads down and they're implementing the program at this, this year for the sites named here. But long-term, how is the persistence and the, and the pipeline sustained? I don't mean to ask how long will 3 million- I don't mean to ask how long will three million dollars last, but what I mean is for the effort that you're putting forth right now, when do you need another grant hopefully to sustain and, and move this along?
So we need another grant every year. If you can work on that, that'd be great, Mr. Harrison.
Line me up, sir.
I would say that, that the pipelines are pretty healthy now. So as, as they referenced, um, we, the, the Beres County Schools has been recognized as the only system in the state that has a recognized K-12 pipeline for STEM. Part of our goal last year with those nine schools was to have essentially two sides of the county, a STEM pipeline, K-12 on two sides of the county, an IB pipeline on both sides of the county. Those were big changes that you guys all kind of agreed to, to put immersion, as they said, at all schools with twenty-five percent of Hispanic population and then also with Harrisburg and Cox Mill for Chinese. Really all of those locations have been successful with immersion and then Royal Oaks is the next step in that is we begin to add Arts Elementary School. And we were very pleased with the, the sign-up there as far as the, right now, what, twenty-five percent or twenty percent of the school are magnet students. So we'll see as that, kind of let that grow at elementary school for two or three years and then move that to middle and high. But right now, those were the programs that the communities expressed that they were interested in, arts being the, the last one that we've kind of brought on. And I think we're very pleased where we're at now. Now, again, you kind of hone that and move forward. We have a couple of schools that have just had STEM for, this is their second year or they're coming on this year and others that have immersion for the first time and obviously Royal Oaks with arts. But where we're at now is again, healthy programs, lots of choice. I think, I don't remember the number of, of students that are in a choice school. We just talked about that, but I don't have it in front of me. But it was a very significant number and then again, trying to, to be a competitive school district that give people a choice. I think we're in, in good shape there. Now, again, we can, can always use more funding and always try to figure out how to do that a little better. And that's essentially what these ladies are working on with the Empower grant and again, to, to figure out how to serve populations that may not be on the front edge of that, but, but will still be participate in the program.
Well, thank you both for being here and asking, answering all of our questions. We appreciate it.
We're happy to do so.
And best wishes going forward with it.
Thank you.
Board members, next we'll move on to 4.02, the audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. And welcome, Ms. Kelly Klutz and Mr. Adam Sapurik. Is that close?
Yes. I thank you. I'm going to let Adam do the presentation, but I did want to say to you, apparently we picked up the wrong file when we sent it to Mindy for uploading. So one of the files in Board Docs is not the file that you need. I have emailed it to you, all of you within the last couple of minutes and I've also emailed it to Adam so that he can load it into Board Docs. There is, the, the second attachment that's in Board Docs is one that he's going to review, but he's also going to review the one that's in your email. Okay? Thank you.
I guess I'll start with the letter that was essentially just emailed to you. And this is just our communication to the board, letting you know how the audit fared as far as conducting the audit, the timing, management's representation letter signed, the date that it was signed. And then anything new or unusual that can be found in the financial statements will be outlined in this letter. And there's just one item that I'd like to point out on there. We actually, in implementing a new GASB, GASB 75, which created a liability on your financial statements for the retiree health benefit, we essentially did a prior period adjustment. Anytime you implement a new accounting standard, you look back at last year's balance sheet and reflect, how would it have looked if we had recorded this liability back then? So that is what's considered a prior period adjustment and that prior to period adjustment, the amounts are disclosed in Note 5 of the financial statements. And I'll just have you know that they are very large numbers. The retiree health benefit for your governmental activities amounted to a $400 million liability and the liability on the school food service fund represented nearly a $13 million liability. So these are essentially large numbers that now have to be disclosed on your financial statements, whereas previously they were off balance sheet. There were, these are the liabilities related to employees that retire, their continued health benefits covered by the state in perpetuity is now reflected, your percentage of that, your component piece of that is now reflected on your financial statements and it's a large number. The state plan is essentially a $33 billion liability with a billion dollars in the bank. So it is completely, nearly completely unfunded, representing your portion of that creates a $400 million liability now on your governmental statements, the first two statements of the financial statements. These are, these are liabilities that you'll never have to pay from within the funds. You pay retirement benefits in the form of a, a set percentage of salary. So when, when you pay a hundred dollars of salaries, you pay eighteen dollars to the state for health benefits, pension plan, disability and death benefits. So those contributions to the plan are accounted for based on your salaries, but the actual liability that the state has calculated to fund for future benefits, the future payouts from these plans, they're very large dollars. And we've, in the past, recognized the pension piece of that through a GASB, GASB 68 implemented four years ago. Now we're doing this year, GASB 75, so. All right. Again, the audit report is the 70-page PDF that was sent out with the Board Docs. That's our actual audit report. But I've also got a summary report, just to kind of go over some of the highlights of information and to spur any questions you might have. But again, I also have the financial statements with me if you have any direct questions regarding those as well. But this information is summarizes, again, some of the highlights from that 70-page set of financial statements.
Kelly, we don't have that, the 70-page file?
Oh, it's the link.
Oh, just the link, okay.
Yeah, so there's a link in Board Docs that'll take you to our website that has the financial statement.
Okay, it's that one. And then the other thing, just of note, the letter has a 2017 date on it? Was that possibly the wrong letter?
Yeah, it's, yeah. The, the letter was dated September 21st, 2018, which is the date that we issued the financial statements. And then it probably, if it's last year's letter, it does not include reference to the new GASB, but we can get you that one emailed.
Okay.
So. But again, everything else in the letter just lets you know that the audit, when it's planned, when it's scheduled and management had no other consultations, no other issues, we, no disagreements. So again, all in all, a, a standard clean letter and the only thing to note on there is the new accounting, the new GASB that we incorporated. All right. So the first page of the summary is just a little chart showing you the cash and cash equivalents on hand in your general and other special revenue fund, your fund aid. This fund used to be incorporated in, as part of the general fund. So we combine these kind of just to show you that your cash on hand, this is, this is where most of your cash is for spending for future uses and that amount exceeded $20 million as of June 30th, 2018. The next page shows your fund balance within those two funds, again, the general fund and the other special revenue fund. The fund balance exceeded $18 million and of that $18 million, the majority of it is available for appropriation, meaning it's available to be spent. So this chart shows your comparison for the last three years of your total fund balance compared to your fund balance that's available for appropriation. You have fund balance in the form of several assets that you cannot spend, inventory, prepaid, those are already spent. There, those aren't available for future spending. All right. Next page shows your revenues and expenses for the last three years in those two funds. And you can see this year, your net income essentially for the general fund and other special revenue fund was actually positive. If you look the year before, you can't even see the green bar, it was, you essentially broke even. And then the year before that, you had a slight decline in fund balance. So again, this just shows revenues exceeding expenditures for the current year, June 30th, 2018, in those two funds. And those two funds are, are about $70 million of your activity. All right. After those three charts, the, the data used to create those is found in table form, the actual numbers. The cash on hand, 20 million, 464 compared to 17.7 million from the previous year. We also break out your liabilities in those two funds, 2.1 million last year, $3 million at the end of the year. And your total fund balance, the different categories are laid out there too. Non-spendable, again, those are the inventories, prepaid that you cannot spend. Restricted fund balance, the North Carolina state laws are written so that you don't spend money you don't have. So until cash comes in the, in the door in the form of receivables, you can't appropriate it. So we have restricted by state statute is the significant portion of that restricted fund balance. And again, that's just money that at the, as of June 30th, 2018, was an outstanding receivable and so you can't budget for it until the 1920 year.
So the, the screen apparently froze and so he, Adam is trying to get us unfrozen and up to current.
The other Adam.
Yes, the other Adam.
So, but you all have, if you're following along, it's the chart after the three graphs. If, if there's any questions on the numbers there, that's what we're going over. And the next two categories of fund balance are assigned fund balance and unassigned fund balance. And these two make up what is available for appropriations. These are available to be spent. Of the $17 million available, you've already outlined and laid out $7 million of what you plan on spending, of what you've assigned for using, using that fund balance. And that'll come in the form of the 1819 appropriated, the budget appropriation amount. If you've already appropriated that amount, then it, the, and then the 1718 financial statements, it becomes assigned. We've also assigned some dollars for future retire, retirement spiking payouts and also to cover workers' comp insurance premiums for the fact that you have become self-insured through workers' comp in the last few years. And so we've set aside a, a, a fund balance to cover future claims or for returning to a actual workers' comp insurance situation. That, that number was calculated using three months of workers, or three years worth of workers' comp premiums. And so that makes up the bulk of what is assigned fund balance. Any questions about those categories? Again, we'll, below that balance sheet is a summary of the revenues and expenditures in those two funds, where you can see $73 million of revenues collected, most of it from the county. And then the breakdown of the expenditures, 70.9 million expended for a net increase in fund balance of 2.2 million dollars.
Can you go back to that, that graph? Because it doesn't look right.
The graph?
Which one? Which graph?
Yeah, go back to the second graph. Your, your, your expenditures are showing more than your revenues, but on your balance sheet, your revenues are higher than your expenditures.
Wait, the, are we talking, so the third graph?
That graph right there.
Yes.
Yeah, that shows revenues.
Oh, I'm looking at 16. I'm sorry, my fault.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
I'm on the wrong side. That's my dyslexia. Excuse me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. This has the most current information closer to the numbers. Yeah, sorry.
That's the way I count us.
That's, that's right.
I'm always looking, yeah, you would.
And just.
It is not Chinese, but is close. But yes, it is left, uh, left side is the most recent. And it, but you do, you can't see when you compare the three years though. Last year was essentially break even. This year, you added $2 million of fund balance, but when you look back to 16, you actually used 1.6 million. So if you annualize those three years, you're really only adding minute dollars to fund balance over those last three years. There's, you know, there's an ebb and flow into losses and usage of fund balance when your county is, is funding you, is funding you well. So your usage of fund balance combined for the last three years is actually a gain of, of just $400,000, which on this size budget is not a lot of, a lot of money, so.
Just while you're on this slide, at the bottom is a footnote. B includes stabilization by state statute. Can you just explain that briefly for the layperson?
Yep. That's the North Carolina law that prevents you from spending money that you have not collected yet. It's essentially a forced bad debt write-off. So you have a receivable due from, whether it be from the county, from other sources. Your, your I-3 grant is reimbursement. So these receivables, at the end of the year, you can't budget to spend those until after the, you've actually collected the cash. It forces you to be conservative and not spend money that you've not put in the bank yet. So it restricts that fund balance. So if you wanted to make a budget where you were spending every dollar of fund balance, you could not appropriate that restricted piece. Next page, we just have a roll forward of your capital outlay fund. This fund carries very little fund balance, only $291,000 at the end of the year, but it shows the 55 and a half million dollars that flowed through that this year in the form of construction and bonds and new schools and HVAC, roof replacements, all that gets run through the capital outlay fund. So 55 and a half million dollars of activity and only $291,000 of fund balance. After the general funds, we have the school food service fund. This is your main business-type fund. They differ from the governmental funds in that they are shown on a, on a cruel basis. All of the liabilities and assets that you don't have to record in the fund, like buildings and retirement benefits and debt, those general fund assets and liabilities that you don't include in the funds, you have to include on these business-type funds. You have to treat the school food service fund as if it was a business. And so if you have a pension liability, you have to book it. If you have pension expenses, you have to book it. So part of that third, part of that prior period adjustment is to let you know that while we recorded a $400 million liability for governmental funds, we didn't actually record it on the funds. It's just on the front two statements, on the, what's called the GASB 34 conversion statements. Again, where we add all of your assets and all your liabilities. But for the school food service fund, we actually have to book those adjustments and those liabilities within the fund. So that includes also booking pension expenditures, retirement health expenditures. And so that had an impact on the, this current graph. Part of the usage of fund balance, it excludes the $13 million that we booked as a prior period adjustment, but it does include the current effects of the changes in the retirement health benefit. That retirement health benefit is calculated every year by actuaries. The, they look at the payments in, the payments out, the, how the stock market's doing and the, the very few assets that are in that plan, the, the valuation and what's going to happen to those. And it spits out the change in liability, which also gets run through as an expenditure within that school food service fund. So this year, your cash and cash equivalent becomes the best indicator of comparing how well you're funded from the previous year to the current year. That change in cash represents the real change in the financial health of, of that fund. So while your revenues were $14 million and your expenditures were $15 million for essentially a million-dollar loss, your cash only went down 400,000. And that's because of changes in these pension benefits, these retirement health benefits and other factors that are outside of the control of, of the actual school food service fund and preparing meals every day. So this chart, you'll see again, a significant decline in that net income. That data is on the next page. And again, that change in net assets was $942,000. Compared to last year, it was a loss of 75,000 and the year before that is a loss of 138,000. Now, that 100, that 942,000 dollars lost in the current year is not all related to pension benefits and health benefits. There were some issues with profitability this year and again, There were some issues with profitability this year, and again, that is more into the tune of 400,000, which is what cash went down by. You had revenues, food sales, 4.4 million, and federal reimbursements of 9.1 million. When you compare those numbers to the previous year, there was some change from sales to federal reimbursements as some of your schools went into the CEP program, where essentially their meals are all free, and then they're reimbursed by the federal government. But when you combine those two numbers, your total sales went down $9,000. So while your county is growing, your school food service fund has declined in revenue by $9,000. And that was on top of increases in the food cost, 6.2 million compared to 6 million last year, and then salaries and benefits, 6.8 million last year and 7.2 million this year. Now, that 7.2 million dollars does include those pension expenses, those retirement health expenditures. So again, you can't compare those, we're not really looking at apples and apples when we look at that salary expenditures, because it does include some additional expense related to these new benefits. Is there any questions on?
Other expenses?
You, repairs and maintenance, contracted services, fuel costs, every other expenditure of the school food service fund that's not salary or food cost.
A quick question then, so with all these apples and oranges, how do we, are we doing better, we're doing worse?
There is, in the financial statements, a non-GAAP schedule in the back that shows school food service, where you take out all of these other fruits and just look at apples or just look at oranges. And that is in the back schedules, it's a non-GAAP schedule, but it takes out pension liabilities, the change in pension liabilities, the change in retirement health. It even takes out contributed capital. The last two years, while you're building new schools, the child nutrition department actually benefits from that. They get a bunch of new equipment, they get a bunch of supplies and materials, their spoons and ladles, all of that gets paid for. So in the last two years, you've had significant dollars contributed to them in the form of capitalized equipment and just supplies and materials. That also gets excluded in this back schedule. So to answer your question on the front end, it's cash. Cash is the asset that a lot of the federal requirements are based around for child nutrition. If you have, you're supposed to operate your child nutrition fund within one to three months of operating cash on hand. If you have less than one month, you can't charge them indirect cost. If you have more than three months, you need to tell DPI, how do we plan on spending down some of this cash? So as long as there's no significant fluctuations in receivables or payables, then cash is a really good indicator of how your child nutrition department's doing. And with school ending in June, those receivables are minimal. You stop buying food towards the end of June, except for summer feeding, so your receivables and payables every June 30th are really kind of minimal, and they're not going to fluctuate much. So again, cash is a really good indicator, and there's even a cash flow statement in the financial statements that kind of outlines just where you're spending cash and where it's being collected, so. All right. And then your free and reduced percentage upticked this year by 1% to 42.8. Now, so far, we've only been talking about the general fund and the other special revenue fund, because this is where you actually have cash on hand, have other assets, have fund balance. A significant portion of your funding comes from the state, and then a small portion comes from the federal government. And this chart just shows you the $70 million spent out of local, how it stacks up to the 185 million dollars of state funds that you spent. And again, those funds, you do not carry fund balance. Those funds are use it or lose it, carry over, you don't carry cash on hand, you carry allotments. And so again, the most significant portion of your funding comes from the state, and your local fund becomes the piggy bank for when state law changes, when salary rates change. If you can't, if your state funds don't cover all of those changes, that's when you dip into the local fund, fund balance or local fund piggy bank, so. This just gives you, again, kind of an idea of the size of those funds, not included in local. After that, we just break it down on a per pupil basis. Again, state fund is the most significant piece of your funding, a little bit from the federal government. Your capital projects is also on here, but that's going to fluctuate just based on activity. The last two years, you've been building schools, so it's much higher than it was the previous year, and these expenditures aren't even, aren't really included when you're looking at what we spend per pupil-wise, but they are on this chart. Again, that same information that was used to create those last two charts is outlined in a table on that next page. 183.9 million dollars of state funding and 11.6 million dollars of federal funding. Your ADM is 32,499 as of the best of the first or second month, and those are the same numbers across the board there. So a lot of your funding is determined on that first or second month, whichever is higher. So that's what these three numbers are. They represent that, the highest of the first or second month ADM for the last three years. So 32,499 students compared to 31,900. And again, a trend that's been going up for years and shows no signs of stopping, and that's why you're still in the process of building schools.
Now, Kelly, when the state measures ADM, are they counting capital outlay? They're not counting that in their total ADM, are they?
No.
Just the other three categories? As far as the local, I mean, as far as the, the ADM of the district, I should say, when we say what our ad, our count is, the money per pupil.
Oh, yes, so they don't, the state doesn't evaluate the capital in a per pupil analysis the way that they do in the audit.
In the county, okay.
Any questions there? Again, excluding capital outlay is really the per pupil expenditure that is compared, if you ever look at comparisons from your county to the rest of the state, when they rank you, you know, 1 through 115, they're excluding those capital outlay dollars. And then finally, the last page letting you know we didn't have any findings or any question cost. This summarizes what is outlined or what is presented in the financial statements. Included in those 70 pages are four letters, three opinion letters, and a letter on internal controls, all letting you know that we believe that these financial statements are fair and accurate. We believe that your internal controls over state and federal funding are adequate, and that we believe that you've, in the programs that we audited as major on state and federal, we found no instances of non-compliance, and that we believe that each of those major programs are fairly stated and fairly and accurately spent in accordance with program guidelines. And those monies include the state public school fund every year, the I-3 grant for federal funds, and the special ed cluster for the other piece of your federal funds that we audited for compliance purposes.
Well, congratulations, Kelly and team, on having another successful audit. Board members, any questions?
I just want to kind of reiterate the thanks to Kelly and her group. Again, what this kind of proves is that, you know, they do a great job, and also that we're able to kind of withstand a problem or something that we don't expect because of kind of the conservative way that we look at that. The easy example is the AD teachers that we talked about before. There are lots of districts that, if they got into that situation, wouldn't be able to absorb that. We could do that, and that's because of the work of Kelly and her group, and it certainly is a great relief to me and confidence to me to know that we have that. And then also, thanks to Adam to, for his ability to explain all this to a former English teacher, because he did a great job with that as we went in, so really do appreciate both of y'all on that. So thanks a lot.
I appreciate your time, and if there's any questions after the meeting, feel free to email me, contact me. Kelly has my information, my phone number is in the financial statements. I'd be happy to go over. Again, there's, it's a lot of information here. The financial statements have grown thanks to the new GASBs, and can be kind of confusing when you're trying to reconcile the fund statements to other statements that include just a lot of additional information being presented here. So they've really grown in size over the last few years, and this year, I think those, that new GASB added 10 pages of schedules and footnotes. So again, a lot of information, but feel free to contact me anytime year-round with any questions on these.
Thank you.
So this wasn't fund statement, F-U-N, but F-U-N.
Yeah, yes, fund accounting.
I think I'm up next, too, aren't I?
No, we have one more topic before you, but you can, don't get too comfortable. Okay, board members, item 4.3 is regarding forming the committee and the plan for the Beverly Hills site review. I just emailed you a proposed timeline that was a combination of what was said in the previous meetings about Beverly Hills and knowing that we need to pay this bill by about April, so how do we fit all the things in until then? So I have named Mrs. Carpenter and Mr. Shoemaker to the committee for two reasons. One, they're both on the construction committee, and the second reason is they each voted on one side of the vote regarding the Beverly Hills discussion. So I thought that was a good balance, and they'll complement their activities with what they know and do for the construction committee. We appreciate the support of the county commissioners and the funding provided for the Beverly Hills site review. And again, in the, there is a draft of the timeline, so board members, we have some homework to do. And Mr. Shoemaker or Ms. Carpenter, would you, one of you want to walk through this as a, and then Mr. Shoemaker, you reviewed it.
Yeah.
Do you want to walk through kind of what we need to do?
Well, you see before you the timeline.
I can send it to.
Did you send it an email?
Yeah, I just sent an email. I mean, I sent it to you and Carolyn earlier to review.
Here it is.
Yeah, I'm going to send it. Who is projecting? Adam, what's your last name? Mark, yeah, I forgot. Since while we're waiting for him to pull that up, it takes us from now naming the committee today, what we need to do as homework board members, to submit items to the committee to be considered for the scope of work, down to when we expect the actual A and E architecture and engineer firm to complete the review in about a two-month timeframe, be ready to present to the board at the April work session, and then make a decision and move forward with it.
So Madam Chair, can I ask a very general question, please? When we say site review, what does that mean? I'm not a, I'm not a construction person, and so I guess I'm asking, is there any other example recently where we did a site review of this nature? I guess I've.
I don't believe so, but Mr. Shoemaker has, with the business he's in on a daily basis, I know he already has some ideas about experts to just consult to help formulate this. So his contacts that are not school system. Also, the committee may ask questions of staff, but staff will not be party to creating the scope of work.
I'll take my questions offline with Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Shoemaker later on. Thank you.
And each individual, I mean, what we're asking, now, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but each board member, what they would like to see, whether you, I mean, if you've got a suggestion, I mean, you know, if you want a one-story building, or, am I not correct in what you're saying?
Yeah, and I think the scope of work is more about the viability of rebuilding on the site.
Yes, that's what we talked about a couple of months ago. You said we had 20,000, we still have $20,000 to do this?
Yes, we have $20,000 allocated.
And you're looking to have a capacity of, what, is it still a 25%?
And I'll just clarify, I don't want to get into, I guess, building the scope of work. If you look at this second line item, board members submit items to the committee to be considered, then it needs to follow the approved motion.
Right, so the motion was approved like June 27th, so that should be in our minutes from June 27th. The, I'm going to call it more of a functional design or description, what you functionally want, and then if you want to see options for them to investigate, is there one option, two options, or things that you may want them to come as an?
Like such as leaving portion of the building?
Pardon?
Such as leaving portion of that building standing, or is it?
Well, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say functionally, this is what we, right now, the motion was a functional motion to say we want to have capacity of 400, 500 core, but then we would consider something that would be equivalent to 400 with another opportunity to put some other staff or function in the building, so to have a dual-function building, one's as a school with staff there, or one is a complete school with 500 core capacity, something along those lines. But if you have things that you would like to insert in the scope for them to look at, and what I would suggest, would add one date, and that would be the work session date of whenever our work session is, I think it's the 5th of November. So that, I'll have a, Ms. Carpenter and I should have a rough draft before the board so they can at least look at it, chew on it, before we go to committee provides the report, including the draft, and, because we have to get it approved, right, by the 12th? Is that what you're expecting on November the 12th?
Yes, I was trying to stay away from the 5th just because that's the work session before the election.
Right, but I was just saying that would just, it would just be a rough, a rough draft that they would already have in their possession. So we should have that before that meeting, so I would guess. Mindy, what date do you need the information, the Thursday before or the Wednesday before the meeting?
Yeah, so you're saying change the 12th. See, I was looking at it on the November 12th as it being a report, in the reports area.
Oh, okay.
And then in the December, you have everything finalized and you're on to selecting an A and E firm. Now, we can do 11-5 delivery of draft scope. The dollar, which?
It's Veterans Day.
Oh, okay, that's right. It is later that month, because, that's NCSBA, too, so it's the 19. Okay, so maybe 11, that gives us two weeks between meetings, so maybe delivery of draft.
On 11-19?
On 11-5.
11-5, okay, yes.
Delivery of draft scope of work by the report to the board.
Mm-hmm, so I would have to have that finished by that Thursday or, okay. So I'd have by the end of the day Wednesday, or by Thursday morning when you walk in. Okay. I just want to get my picture, I know what I'm on.
So everybody need to?
So everybody has the weekend to look at it, so when we come into the work session, everybody's already had a chance, if they want to read it and redline it.
So then that's, yeah, that's saying October 31st is that Wednesday, is what I think, if I was on the right month?
Yes, so. Yes, so after I eat all that candy, I'll be ready.
So everybody would need to get it to us, what?
I have by the 15th.
15th, we need to get any input, any ideas that you have about what you want in the scope of work, or how you want it to look. Just remember, what we're trying to do is use the free thinking of this firm to kind of give us out-of-the-box thinking, so we've got to be careful about how we constrain them, because anything we put as a constraint limits what they can do as far as thinking out-of-the-box, and that's the only thing, because I thought that's what we, we wanted someone to come in. Now, we could, we could say we'd like to have an option that looks at this, and we would have an option that says, okay, here's, go for the sky, and, you know, cost is not going to be an item that, you know, you could have a cost as one of your option items, but then again, you would want to make sure that that's not the only.
Yeah, and keep in mind, this was what we discussed at the decision meeting, I'll call it, on, I think, June 28th, is this is not to just come in with an option for renovation because of the limitations of the site and where those current pieces of the building sit. We need to make use of the whole piece of land most likely in order to meet today's standards on school construction.
We want another 60 to 75-year building.
But we do have a restriction on cost, because we only have $20,000.
No, 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 I'm talking about the building itself.
We're saying, yeah.
Just to estimate the costs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we've got a restriction on that, but cost-wise, we want to look at what options are available.
Right.
But what date, now, so all board members have to get the information back to us, when now by?
October 15th.
October 15th, okay.
It's in there.
Okay, by the 15th, okay. And are we going to put out an RFQ, then?
We do not need to, the way I understand it, Kelly, right?
No.
Because of the low amount of money. So you guys, when you gather the information, and whoever you want to inquire to regarding pros and cons, you can choose to put out an RFQ, or RFP, you know, what's your approach to your firm? That could delay the process, and I don't know how much firms might want to put into it if this is a limited engagement in it, you know, it's not a funded project to build a school yet, so.
Well, one of the things is, you know, making sure the firm has knowledge of, of course, school construction, but whether they, you know, whether they're working with us right now. I personally, I would like somebody that's not working with us right now.
Well, I think that's, each board member should kind of interject that to us, so we can.
Yeah, you can put that in your list of requirements or interests.
Okay, all right, is that, do we need a motion to approve this?
No, this is just really a report to, because it could be adapted based on what Barry and Carolyn, and we don't want to have to keep voting to change a date. Let them decide what sounds reasonable based on their research and putting together the proposal.
Have a consensus approval on this?
Well, let's see if there's any other questions. Any questions or concerns about this timeline?
A quick question from me for clarification, so we're looking at what do we expect from the, of the companies doing the work, and what are we expecting out of Beverly Hills?
To Parker? I'm going to say, we want somebody that's good construction, that addresses who's doing the work. I'm also hearing, what do you want to see out of Beverly Hills? That's two.
Yeah, I don't know this so much what you want to see out of Beverly Hills, but what you want the firm to do in the scope of work. So do you want them to give us two or more options for consideration? So, for example, Rob's point, that they leave some part of the current school and work with it. Like I said, it's not a full renovation, but what are the kinds of options you might want to have included?
Or a combination of both.
And then as far as the firm, they're not going to be doing any construction, this is going to be mainly an architectural design firm, so they're just going to do a conceptual design, much like, you know, when we commissioned the research of the campus over at Central Cabarrus, they kind of looked at, is it feasible? So it's a kind of a feasibility, but they have to add some creativity, because here's how it would look, here's what you'd have to do, and they give you a broad-brush stroke, and then they give you probably within 15, 20% estimate of what they think it might cost you. So at least you have something to start out with.
Madam Chair, I'd like to float an idea here that hopefully would save time and be efficient for the committee and Mr. Shoemaker and Ms. Carpenter. If you would say that you would take questions from one of us at a time over the phone at a certain time, then I would get off the phone, then Mr. Walter or somebody else would get on the phone and talk to you, so that we're talking to both committee members at the same time, and getting a kind of verbal consensus and building toward an understanding.
I guess I don't want to have a meeting on this.
No, not a meeting.
On the phone or otherwise.
Well, okay.
They can talk, three board members can talk at any time they want to. So if you want to talk to the two committee members, feel free to contact them.
Separately.
Well, you can, I mean, most of us with our phones today can patch in a third person, so you can do that conversation, and if anybody else wants to have that conversation, go ahead, but.
However, they choose.
We're not going to have another, because.
I don't want to have another meeting.
You get a call very quickly if somebody calls that line, so we don't want to do that.
Yeah, well, I don't want to have four people talking, but I do want to have myself and the two board members, the two committee members talking, the three of us at the same time, so we have a consensus. Okay, on my own, then, thank you.
It's not so much building consensus, we've just got to compile the ideas. So Ms. Carpenter and I will compile your ideas, and then we'll build our consensus around the work session. That's when we'll see the document, and you'll have something that you can now put your red pen on and say, oh, I hate this, and I hate this, I really love this. But that's the way it is, because it's going to be a little iterative, but, you know, we're not afraid of someone not agreeing with what was in the document, but this is what we heard, this is what we documented, but a lot of times, once you see it, then you've got the format already straight, so that's the big thing, you get your format straight, and then you can make changes to the format and add some more meat to it.
So, Mindy, this will be a guideline, too, on what we need to put on what agendas. So any other questions right now on starting this process? Okay. Thank you. So now, Ms. Clutz, you may rejoin us for the budget amendments, item 5.1.
We have just a few budget amendments today. We'll start with our state fund. You can see, the first budget amendment is an additional $173,000, that was unexpected, and certainly glad to have those dollars for computer equipment. That's specific, you have to buy computer equipment with that. The next one is a state allotment, basically that's the grant that we've talked about many times, as that was passed in the state budget this year, so we applied for the grant, and we were awarded five of these positions through the grant, you can see that allocation there. Okay, the next one's just a simple reclass of restart funds, and the final one is an adjustment to our behavior support program, and the state just asked for you to ask for more money than you, than you, ask for what you need, is basically what they have recommended, and then they'll give you as much as they can, so we've had to make an adjustment to decrease because we didn't get as much money as we need. Okay, the next one is our federal budget amendments. Back one, there you go, Adam. So these are some reclasses of Title I and an allotment for our behavior support services. So when we did the budget resolution, we had some changes in this area because we didn't believe that we were going to continue this behavior support position, we thought it was going to a different district. Rob and Mr. Kirk had some questions about that, and so now we found out that we are going to continue this position, so the state has awarded us the dollars, and so now it would look very similar if you looked at it from last year to this year. Okay, and then just some reclasses there, minor reclasses for some other federal programs. Okay, and finally, our capital budget. So the county funds us in phases these days with our construction, and so as they have a better handle on their cash flow, they're able to fund us in increments, and so this is how they have, they have funded most recently, the portion of Hickory Ridge Elementary School for our technology infrastructure and our construction owner, and these are the budgeted amounts that we agreed at the beginning of the project.
Dr. Kirk?
Kelly, with the county kind of doling it out in parts, do they, do they respond to our asks, do they kind of med it out? Do you know what's coming? Do they know what we're going to be asking for?
Yes, so there's a plan, so when we meet with the county and discuss the initial budgets for the elementary school or the high school, or maybe a future elementary school, we determine that budget at that time. So we indicate that, so if we're talking about the high school, we're talking about 77 million, we put those in categories, and then we just, we just piece it in into their cash flows over time. So these amounts are amounts that we've agreed to at the beginning of the project.
Is this 213, is that, is that basically that contingency we wanted, or is this not the contingency we wanted for Hickory Ridge?
Two, five, are you talking about the 513?
Is the 513?
No, it's not contingency, this is just the money that we had said in the beginning of the project we were going to need for infrastructure, technology infrastructure, and also in construction owner, these are types, things like their playground, right? There is also, so we always use our elementary, don't always, but most of our elementary schools that we build now, we use for parks and recs, so they're going to need a...
So this isn't that 600,000?
It's not, it is not.
Okay.
A scoreboard, that's the word I wanted to try to say, a scoreboard that we wouldn't necessarily put in an elementary school, but for parks and recs, we will, right? So those are the kind of things that's in.
So this isn't that contingency?
No, ma'am, it's not.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, ma'am. On your first slide about the fines and forfeitures, the State School Board Association recently reactivated negotiations with the state about fines and forfeitures for technology expenses, is this part of that? Are we getting, or is unrelated to that?
It's unrelated to that specific.
To that.
Fines and forfeitures request or need, so that has not been resolved or settled.
This is a different.
This is different.
Source.
This is just the ongoing payments, not the backlog.
So, yeah, so they, they did accumulate more last year through June 30th than they normally accumulate, and so then they just, they dispersed a little more out to the districts, but no, it's not that.
Okay, so it's not trickling in from the original 2008 issue?
It's not that issue.
Gotcha, thank you.
Now, what will we do with that?
What will we do with it? I'll let Dr. Probst answer that question, because she's got, she has a plan.
What will we do with that? Now, we got, I'm at over half a million dollars, what will we do with that? I know we bought many U.K.'s, but that didn't cost that much.
We're going to give money back to the county, aren't we?
No, Mr. Powell, not. We're going to be working on updating the inventory that we have in the district, we're working on making sure that everything is in a four-year cycle and making sure we buy current equipment, and I think that that's the most positive aspect of that.
Okay. Okay, board members consent?
I can see it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we are on agenda item 5.2, the school improvement plans, and Dr. Kelly Probst is joining us, and Mr. Corey Cochran.
Yes, this is super principal, our principal of the year. Thank you, Mr. Cochran, for being with us.
And you'll be here two months in a row.
So, good evening, we have before you the school improvement plans, they're in board docs. These plans were provided to you last week for your review. We would like to commend all of our schools, our principals, their teachers, parents, and community members for their hard work on these plans. To help you understand the process of school improvement planning is Mr. Corey Cochran, our 2018 Principal of the Year, and he's here to share with you the process that a principal leads a school improvement team in making these plans.
All right.
It's right there.
Okay, thank you. This is, I mean, obviously, the way we do it at Mount Pleasant Elementary School, but from talking with fellow principals and just being involved in the process, I'm pretty certain this is generally the process followed by everyone. Overall, this, the format that we use is very user-friendly, and what I mean by that is, at one point, the school improvement plan was something that was just written by a few people and not carried out by the majority of the staff, but this format has allowed us to use a good bit of staff to be involved in the process, both in the planning and the implementing. Typically, what we do is at the end of a school year, we look at the data we have, we plan out what our committees will be for the next year, and our committees are aligned with our action plans, our plans of action that we have. For example, we have three plans of action, curriculum, student support, and MTSS. The, we have summer SIP meetings where we come up with ideas for each of the committees, again, after looking at the data we have. This is finalized by the end of the summer and voted on in early August, and then the process, we have the committees meet once a month, school improvement team also meets once a month, and they're reviewed at those committee meetings and at the overall school improvement team meeting, and adapted if necessary. So that's just briefly the process.
The process in the last couple of years has really been streamlined, and we've cut down on the paperwork, and we want it to be all action work. I think the principals and staff have really responded to this, and I think that you should be pleased with the plans they put forth and the results that they're getting. So, at this time, are there any questions, comments or questions?
I was just going to comment, I like that this format now has the proficiency data to reflect back on where we, where we, where are we coming from, what's our goal, so I think, I like that part of it a lot.
We get a lot of comments from other districts, I have doctoral students who go to our website and look at it all the time, and they say, you know, it makes it easy, you can go back and see a historical perspective of where the school is. We like that part, too. Forgot to add also that when we do evaluations with our principals throughout the year, it's often easy to bring up this format and to say, where are you in the process?
In terms of Mount Pleasant Elementary's goals, they seem to be going up about 2%. Why not 3, why not 4? No, I'm really just asking about the methodology of picking a reasonable amount and how you're moving toward the current rate, toward that 2%.
Can I jump in on that? Since Mr. Cochran and Mount Pleasant Elementary have exceeded their growth for six straight years, we just want them to keep on doing exactly what they've been doing.
Good answer.
No, just to say, it's, I've been doing this 27 years, and a 2% increase from one year to the next is, I'm happy with that when I, when I see that, so any increase is good, of course, but we want it to be achievable, so we know that's usually done in incremental steps.
On this report, where do you, I mean, for last year's report, I'm sure there's a mid-year report and there's an end-of-the-year report, where does the public get to see that? Because if they go to our website, they just see a blank, they see what you did last year, they don't see the finished product. Where does that go?
The current plan should be on the school websites.
On the, on your school website?
Yes.
Not the district website?
It should be on both. If it's not, we're waiting until it gets approved by the board, because we always keep it on the accountability page also.
Yeah, I'm looking at that, it just says, has last year's plan.
Well, it's not approved yet. It's because it's not approved.
But those are last year's plans.
So if you want to approve it tonight, we'll post it tomorrow.
I'm just saying, we're doing all these good things, I'd like to see some of that publicized and put on, put on the website, so we can see that.
It'll be, it'll be posted next Tuesday.
Right, and this is June 15th, and it's still empty, so.
Any other questions?
I'll just say one more time, how much we appreciate Corey and his work at Mount Pleasant, and also coming out on Monday night, now going to be here two Monday nights to... and also coming out on Monday night and now going to be here two Monday nights to answer you guys' questions. We appreciate him doing that, so thanks a lot, Mr. Cochran.
Sorry, the good part about that is my impact through education awards are next week also. So I am able to combine that, so.
You get a two per.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay, board members, keep this on consent?
We, I haven't read through them all yet, just can we leave it to action?
Okay, and if we, we'll put on consent. And if there's additional questions, we can adjust that. Okay, next we have 5.03, the policies for approval on second reading. And I welcome Ms. Reimer and is Mrs. Burns here tonight?
Ms. Burns is on vacation this week.
Good for her.
We are all envious.
She's on vacation?
Okay, board members, any questions overall on this, the list of policies for second reading?
We have gotten no feedback, thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Can we put these on consent? There you go. Thank you. Okay, 5.04, adjustments to the school calendar.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Friday, September 28th was used for our makeup day for September 17th. And we're asking the board to approve that now.
And we did do a general consensus to make sure there wasn't any major issue.
Can we upload the revised calendar to board docs?
Yeah, it's actually not in board docs. And it's just the notation change.
Yes, it is on our website, but we will upload it to board docs.
Okay, so we'll do that as consent as well.
Yeah, and then we'll see the revised calendar.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Hickory Ridge Elementary School Change Order Number Two, Mr. Brian Cohen.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight to request approval of Change Order Number Two for the removal of mass rock at our Hickory Ridge Elementary School project.
We actually don't have this attachment either, I don't think.
But this was all included in that last one, is that correct?
So this is the rock we discussed at the September meeting. And we have since requested the contingency funding from Cabarrus County, which has been approved for this.
And that was all in that last one, correct? That was all in that 600,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was in that, so this 149,000?
This 149,964 was in that 600,000 amount, correct?
It will be funded out of that 600,000, yes, ma'am.
This was just the first set of work. And then we asked for the rest based on the estimates of additional rock work.
Correct.
We'll have another change order down the road as they spend it.
But it's the same rock.
It is the same rock.
It's a different rock in the same location.
Same location.
Lots of rock.
Board members, any questions? We had received a fairly thorough update when we once requested the money. And so this is the follow-up now with the paperwork.
Will we actually see the actual change request from the?
It's in the signature package for Ms. Furtenball to sign.
I can't sign it today.
No, no, but yeah, after the business, yeah, after the business meeting.
Yeah, I think we still need to get it signed.
So we need to get attached that to board docs so we can actually see how many, you know, how many cubic yards or whatever that was.
So we can add that to action?
Or whatever it was.
Yeah, it won't have, it won't have the amounts in the change order request.
But it'll have.
I mean, I have the backup documentation if you'd like to see it, but.
Why would it have the amounts? I can't sign something without amounts.
It won't have the quantified amounts. It'll have, it'll have all the dollar figures from the AIA documents.
If I could just interject a moment. The change order is going to, it's going to change the contract amount. So you're going to have the original contract amount, then you're going to have a change order, and then you're going to have the new contract amount.
Correct.
And that's what the chair signs. We've never had, you know, we've never submitted anything but that, right? So it's very non-detailed. And that's why we go into so much, and I'm turning my head against the mic. That's why we go into so much detail is when we ask for the money. The change orders are just a process to utilize those funds.
Well, if you could just have that, the cover page, I know it's only like a two or three-page document.
Yes, ma'am.
Have that uploaded, and then we'll put that on action next week, since we don't have it, just to see tonight.
Okay, sure.
What do you do with all that rock?
We dump it in a hole and cover it up.
Where at?
On site.
On site?
Yes, we have available space on site that we're able to waste the rock and dispose of it, so we don't have to truck it off-site.
Okay, so is this repurposed for the site to at least fill up?
For lack of a better term, yes.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Let me go on action next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, I think we have you for training on every agenda, Carolyn.
I'm just, what can I say? And I do have some materials here that if any board member, this was on equitable hiring. And it was sponsored by, well, it was actually sponsored by the North Carolina, actually by the state, but it was up by Rowan Community College. But I give Rob some information.
That's what he gave me, right?
Yeah, but if you want to pass it, there's two different...
So take one from the top and one from the bottom?
Yeah, one from the top and one from the bottom. And I have, also give Glenda a copy, but very, very good class. But it touched on a lot of different areas. Also gave us information on how we can get possibly bond money if we wanted to. But it was a three-hour class. And, but like I say, it was just read over the material and everything. But it touched on a lot of different areas. And so just get the packet and look over it. And if you've got any questions, just ask me. But they had a lot of employers and where they had hired different individuals. And it may be something that we could look into. But like I say, if you've got any questions, just give me, ask me about it after you've looked over the material and everything.
And Ms. Carpenter is requesting our approval of, for three credit hours for that class that she attended. We're not approving tonight on consent. And we'd like to get things off our docket. Okay, thank you, thanks Carpenter. 5.07 is regarding voting delegates for the NCSBA Annual Conference. I am planning to attend, Mr. Harrison is planning to attend. Anyone else? And the vote is on, is it on Monday? Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we are allowed four delegates. So it sounds like we have three, Mr. Schumaker, Mr. Harrison, and myself?
No, I'm not, I can't go this year. I know, it's not like I don't have any, I think I've got enough training hours.
But one of us is going to have to collect your certificate or something.
I know, y'all can, one of y'all can collect my certificate. No, unfortunately, but I'm going to, I'll be going to the law conference coming up in October. So I will be going to the law conference the middle of October. So I'm going to be getting training for law conference. But no, unfortunately, I have got something else that I'm going to be doing in November. So I will not be able to, but y'all can get the, get that training for me.
We'll try to catch up to you.
Y'all catch up with me, okay?
Okay.
Y'all get my certificate for me, okay?
Okay, so we will, can we put this on the consent agenda for Mr. Harris, Mr. Schumaker, myself to be delegates? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we will move on to item 6.01, the approval of the Alex subscription agreement. And Dr. Hill?
Good evening, board members. The subscription for the 2018-19 Alex subscription exceeds the amount the superintendent's designee has the authority to approve. I'm requesting a vote of approval at the next week's October business meeting. Alex is a math digital resource that has been used in Cabarrus County Schools since 2014 and began as a pilot. Cabarrus County Schools has utilized Alex in grades six through 12 and for grades four and five for our higher achieving students. As Ms. Jones and Ms. Singulera shared earlier, McGraw-Hill, which also is Alex, was a contributor for the in-kind matching I-3 grant. Other schools last year purchased additional licenses beyond what Cabarrus County Schools purchases at the district level. So again, I'm requesting approval next week at the regularly scheduled business meeting.
Okay, and Dr. Hill did confirm that the quote, while it says it expires about October 6th, it is extended to our business meeting?
That is correct.
Well, you shared some information with me earlier, which I thought was interesting. And correct me if I'm wrong, you said that, and I would say that meant students, we have over 18,000 licenses. That would mean students, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So that's a great question. Thank you for asking. And what Ms. Carpenter is referring to is this evening, we had our first district curriculum and introduction meeting. And Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Powell serve on that committee. We do have 18,100 individual student licenses with Alex. So the way, different digital resources do their subscriptions differently. So some are a site license and others are individual student license. And Alex is an individual student license. So the quote that you see is for 18,100 students.
And so that is over half of our students.
And that's another great question. So as I mentioned, it is part of the, Alex is part of the I-3 in-kind. So what they do is they give us a reduced amount. So they give us, let's see here, we have 4,290 licenses that are $11.06 per license. And then the remainder, 13,810 licenses are at $18.18 per license. And although McGraw-Hill is giving us a discount on the empower, but I will also note they're giving us a discount on the other as well. Their going rate is $45 per license. So you see it is very heavily discounted for Cabarrus County Schools.
This quote does not list the license amount. Normally it would. It just has a standalone district license unlimited quantity is what it says on here.
Well, it's based on a quote that we provide for them in terms of the number of students. So we've calculated an approximate amount of students that we would, that would need the license in grades six through 12. And then we allow our elementary students, our schools rather, in grades four and five or higher achieving students to, we assign those licenses to them. And Ms. Oliphant does that work based on their end-of-grade test scores.
I just think we need something to reconcile the words unlimited on here with what you're saying they're actually providing.
I'll be happy to request an additional quote, yes.
If they, I mean, it could even be a letter of clarification if this is how their part number is described in their system, sometimes they can't change that.
Sure.
So whatever they can give you, that would be, like I said, to reconcile the unlimited.
Sure.
Ma'am, I'm sure this is, this question's not related to the contract, so I, good. Would it be appropriate at the retreat in January to get any kind of report on the Alex software we've been using and how it's been used and how effective it is? It's a sizable investment, maybe worth our time to get into some of the weeds about the money that we're spending on this. But I would like to ask if at that time, maybe it's appropriate to get some kind of understanding of the use of Alex.
And I think we would leave that with Dr. Lawless to consider because I think they have that underway in planning.
Yep.
Because it could extend a day depending on how far you want it.
Or there might be a better timeframe to present that.
Or as they're making the presentation for the retreat, perhaps, you know, incorporate some data from it or something.
If Johnny starts Alex and he moves, and Adam moves in, does Adam get to take that?
Yes.
So it is transferable, kind of?
Well, it's not transferable if the student remains in our district. But if the license is partially used, we can reassign that license for the remainder of a school year. So we, I will add that we do add a little bit of a buffer. And the main reason that we do that is our department has designed some onboarding courses for students over the summer who may miss some content for whatever reason, specifically students who are qualifying for advanced math classes at the middle school level. And inside that course that we've designed, we utilize Alex licenses to assist students since, of course, they're not with our teachers during the summer as an additional support to help those students.
There are the number of licenses you said, but are all those licenses assigned and used continually? Is there five or 3% or something of licenses that are not used at any given time?
So you still have to pay for it if it's not used, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
That 100% of the licenses are used?
No, I'm sorry, I was saying what Mr. Walter was saying was correct. So if you do not use a license, you've already paid for it because it's prepaid, which is why we do our darndest to try to figure out to the student how many licenses we will need and not overpurchase. But at the same time, we do not want to underpurchase because our schools rely on it. I would say that I receive more communication from our teachers and administrators about Alex in terms of wanting additional licenses and things like that than any other resource that we provide at the district level. The other thing that I will say is our schools have a lot of autonomy in the resources that they purchase and select. And that's just through the way that they're allocated funding. So at the school level, schools use a variety of resources that they pay for at the school level with school funds. This just happens to be a district-provided resource. And again, it's because of the demand. It makes more sense to buy at a bulk than it is for individual schools to purchase. So that is one of the reasons why as a district, we've selected to purchase Alex because of the wide-range usage of the product, just more fiscally responsible.
Are there similar projects out there?
Similar projects?
Products?
Similar to Alex?
Yes, what is the goal of this software?
The goal of the software, another great question. So it is aligned to all of our math coursework. So at the high school level will be Math 1, Math 2, Math 3, pre-calculus, calculus courses, AFM. There are also some courses that are available for our students that they have a RTI, which is, it used to be called RTI, it's MTSS. So basically, any students that's struggling at the middle school level for a Tier 2 or a Tier 3, so they have special courses for students that may be struggling. They have ACT, SAT prep. And Alex also can be translated into languages for our students who may not speak English.
Now, is this a self-directed program or is it a teacher or what is going on with it?
It is teacher-directed. At the district level, we have the ability to determine what topics are assigned to each course. So our secondary math specialist is responsible for that. So there, somebody asked for some information earlier, and there was some reference to some Texas standards that are in there. We have the ability at the district level, we get the big kit and caboodle, but we pull out information that's not applicable to Cabarrus County Schools in North Carolina. So those topics are there. And then the teacher then can assign coursework, can assign topics. It is personalized, so depending on if you're a higher-level achieving student, the program will calculate and provide questions to you based on how you are responding, very different than how I'm responding. So it's personalized in nature that it's able to differentiate for each individual student. But at the same time, the teacher can also... But at the same time, the teacher can also assign topics. We just covered standard OA 3. So I'd like for my students to complete however amount of Alex work on AO 3. So it's directed by the teacher and then also individualized per student.
So when we talk about individualized learning, Alex is a part of that equation?
Personalized learning, yes, sir.
Individualized?
We, the, the form, I shouldn't have said individualized. The official term is personalized learning.
Personalized, okay. Changing the.
Yes, that's the education.
Personalized, okay.
Those cohorts, have you had any experience with this program?
I have not.
Have not?
No, I'm not in fourth and sixth grade.
Yeah.
So my question is, does Alex allow us to see how a student is progressing according to the North Carolina standards to see if they're behind or up, keeping up with the progress of the whole, the whole group that's, as they go through the scheduled standardized curriculum for that, that grade? Does it allow them to know where they are in that continuum?
Yes, it gives immediate feedback to the student and also to the teacher. So it gives basically an explanation of what part of the problem was missed for that individual student. And it's aligned to the standards. Our teachers do a great job utilizing the tool. I think Alex is just another tool in the tool belt. It's not the end-all, be-all. Our teachers know our students best. But I strongly believe that when we put good tools in the hands of our teachers, it makes our job more efficient and more effective.
Does it help the teachers to know where they are as far as how they're teaching? Because I know you do different methods of walking through and examining where they are and to make sure they're staying on schedule so that by the end of the year, they've gone through all the curriculum requirements to get to the end, you know, so that they've done every, had every opportunity to master everything for the, expected for that year's curriculum.
Again, I think it's one piece of information. It's really not used in that matter. It's just an opportunity for students to practice and for teachers to see how students are progressing with the tools that they're using at that time. But it is definitely one piece of the puzzle, but this does not provide big picture information. Just lets the teacher know how students are doing on either what's been assigned to them or how they're progressing in their personalized learning path.
Thank you.
And I would just say, my daughter was working on it last night. So it's a, I think, I certainly haven't taught math, but I think the reason that it's popular is the most kind of AI-like software that we have in the sense that it does, so think of if you assign 30 kids a math problems, all the same 30 problems. They work on those, but everybody has different things that they don't understand, right? Like I may not understand this part of the problem and I may not, so, and I may, the person beside me may not understand the other problem. So what it does is kind of re-loop back individually. So we can all take home the same 30 problems, but it'll see that I didn't understand this part and then reassign me others. So the way it was described to us at first is that everybody kind of has a piece of Swiss cheese that has holes in it and each one of those holes are individualized. And the software loops back to fill my holes. But if you use the same piece, it will fill it differently for the next person. I think that's why it's such a popular piece of software.
I think they're supposed to be personalized.
Yeah, the Swiss cheese is personal, right?
Okay, so this will be on the action agenda next week?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Okay, and before we move into closed session, I'm going to take a suggestion from Mr. Walter and just comment that the Cabarrus County Education Foundation luncheon is scheduled on Wednesday, October 10th. If anyone from the community is interested in supporting the Cabarrus County Education Foundation, you can find information at cabarruscountyeducationfoundation.org. I'll spell out all the words. Again, cabarruscountyeducationfoundation.org. And we invite you to join us. So at this time, board members, I'll take a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged, and to consider the pending case of Cabarrus County Board of Education versus the trustees of the teachers and of state employees retirement system in pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or to investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer employee to review personnel recommendations.
Second?
Who said the motion, sorry? Mr. Harrison?
After Harrison.
And the second was Dr. Kirk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's 7-0. Thank you for joining us this evening and good night.